Santa Cruz County and Mosquitos and Capitola. See, or Campbell City have the strictest regulations. I would just like to encourage the council to have equally as strict or stricter regulations for Scotts Valley. And I had a question and I forgot what it was. Oh, I was also wanting to comment about the medical marijuana. If you're as strict on that, you should be as strict or stricter on guns. Thanks.
Hello, my name is Karen Daniel and I am also a resident and have raised kids in this city and county. I have a question in regards to the number of locations. Your question was, can we have an ordinance against the number of locations? I would like to know as a citizen, how we can participate in having an opinion and leveraging that opinion so that it's not just the five of you that are making that choice, that you actually check in with the public and the people that live in the city. How do we, as people that live here, become involved in that decision? Where do we get that question answered?
We have to do it afterwards. Again, we're here to listen to your comments.
Okay.
There's really not a give and take at this moment, but it will be duly noted and something that you can do offline with maybe a city manager, city attorney, police chief.
So as a citizen of this city, I can follow up with the city attorney and get my questions answered so that we can then publish that to the rest of the community so that again, our input is heard?
Well, usually we go through the city manager or other public representatives, couldn't be the chief, and then they relay that to the city attorney.
And the city manager is Tim.
Tim and Mariana, yes.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you so much.
She's open and transparent.
The tragic events of this weekend has left many with...
Could you say your name?
My name is Chris Culligan.
Say it again.
Chris Culligan. Has left many with questions and desire to have a conversation about firearms policy. And I hear that and I respect that and I think their voice needs to be heard. But tonight, this is not that. Firearms policy is governed by federal, state, and to a small extent, county law and this tonight is business policy. As I understand the concern, these places aren't selling mattresses and that's the very reason that these retail businesses are already vigorously governed by regulations, permits, fees, audits, by the federal government, by the state government, and by the county. Why are we considering adding even more red tape? Because this isn't about safety and it's not about culture, it's about a few people and their opinion. And I'd like to remind you, the recent 2016 Supreme Court decision struck down a Texas law where the legislature attempted to outlaw abortion, something that they fundamentally disagreed with, with a law disguised simply as additional regulations for safety. I remember when I moved to this area in the late 90s, I know, I'm a newbie, Scotts Valley was a pretty sleepy town and it just seems like a couple of years ago, you know, we had a few sort of people, new people in the area that had different ideas about how we should live. And that's fine, I mean, everybody gets a voice, but then these people, you know, they started calling the media and they started sort of getting this following of people and demanding that we sort of change how we do business in Scotts Valley. And we had this huge meeting and everybody spoke and it was pretty tense. And look at us today, right? I mean, we're divided. I don't know if this is how we want to continue, I mean, do we really want to allow the few to divide the many so much? The question before you today is really quite simple, do we have a public policy of pushing honest, local, business owners and good families into the darkness and forcing your firearms community to travel over the hill to do business with people and shops in a much more transactional way? Or are we going to return to that time not so long ago where we didn't allow this issue to divide us so much, where we live together with respect and tolerance of our differing views? Thank you.
Thank you.
Actually, if you could reframe a little bit from the applause, I realize it's, people like to do a kind of related thing.
Hi, my name is James Scotts Valley. Firstly, I'd just like to thank the staff for doing this report. I thought it was really thorough and really well done and really clear in the way it presented things. Yeah, I think my major concern is having Scotts Valley at least parallel to these other surrounding cities so that Scotts Valley doesn't become the gun capital of the surrounding areas. I don't think it needs to be that, I don't think the majority of the residents here want that. And, you know, being from one of the other countries, I know firsthand that families feel safe in their homes and a lot of it is to do with gun accessibility. And there are those in the room that agree strongly with that and those that don't. But that's my experience, so I urge the council to take the strongest measures that they can to reduce the threat of gun violence in our community. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jolie Wood and Hannah, I'm a resident and a parent of three children in this community and I would like to express my opinion that I think we should take the strongest measures possible to keep our community a safe community that it feels like it is so we can continue to have a community that we feel comfortable in. And I understand that these are businesses and I just also feel like I don't think our community should become the place that all the gun shops are. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Robert DeForge, only a resident of Scotts Valley and fellow to value, only raised here.
Robert, can you speak into the mic?
Can you say your name again?
Robert DeForge.
Okay.
Robert DeForge.
Thank you.
At this point, to the council tonight, I do know of one of the firearm businesses that was a direct fallout of the moratorium. Our business flooded in January, induced the moratorium, we are no longer allowed to move and establish a license in the city of Scotts Valley. So the moratorium did have a direct fallout on my business, so I wanted to just make you guys aware of that. You know, there's been discussion about the less gun shops in Scotts Valley and I wanted to make it clear why one of them is gone. A rent compliant, responsible, successful firearm business in Scotts Valley, we deal with a lot of law enforcement contracts, a lot of law enforcement business. And I do feel that there is adequate regulation already on the firearms dealers. That being said, I do support the review of the police chief in new firearms related businesses that come into the city. They were very fair, once the second phase of the initial ordinance came through, they were very communicative and supportive and, you know, councilman or mayor, the council came to our business, spoke to us regards to our safety measures. And, but I do want to let people know that these moratoriums do have direct impact on local businesses. People that have supported this community, who continue to support the community, I've raised children here, my children go to school here, and I think that the city police department does a very adequate job in keeping us safe. And that being said, again, let people know that this is not the mecca of firearms dealers, it just happened to turn out that way. So, again, thank you very much for your time.
Hello, John Donahue, live here, have two young children. It's a timely, timely topic, obviously, when Las Vegas shooting happened this weekend. You know, we opted not to say anything to our kids because we weren't quite sure what to say. But I think, you know, on my way home, on my way back here this evening, I was listening to some news coverage of the events. You know, this guy who did the shooting in Las Vegas had incredible number of guns, was active, you know, stand-up citizen as far as anybody knew. And yet this happened, so I appreciate all the principled arguments about gun ownership in this country and history that it has, but, you know, I just, from my perspective, I want this as far away from here as possible. So I would just encourage you all, you know, to think about, there's no question that it's easy, relatively easy in this country to get guns, but it doesn't have to be made any easier than it is already.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Denise Rodd and I'm a resident of Scotts Valley and a co-owner of the Call to Arms Gun Workspace Scotts Valley Licensed, sorry, Gunsmith. The principal of our company, my husband is out of town and training, so he isn't able to be here, so I'm here speaking on his behalf. I'm also the director of the Santa Cruz Women on Target Program that works closely with local business sponsors that teach women firearm safety and marksmanship. So in reviewing the options, option two appears to propose mandatory, yet non-defined security standards. As we have no idea what standards could be applied, it is possible that the chief could mandate hundreds, thousands, or tens of thousands of dollars of improvements, essentially pricing some retailers out of business. Some may not even be able to be possible for they don't own their own property. And prospective retailers could be acquiring properties that simply will not pass inspection. Of course, every responsible firearm retailer is going to fully cooperate with the local law enforcement officials and actively seek their advice on local criminal activity and methods to make their property less a target. And I think it's important to understand that I'm not arguing against the appropriate security procedures, I think that's really important. However, allowing the city to write a blank check on the retailer's account is not a good way to do business. Option three proposes significant bureaucratic and cost overhead to any potential new firearm retailers. By imposing the conditional use permit application process, the city has unlimited discretion to approve or deny a new firearm retailer's application based solely on the loosely defined term of fit to the community and an undefined perceived impact to the surrounding properties. The notification process ensures opponents will present a popularity campaign to the planning commission. And I guess the question is, what other types of retailers are required to get a conditional use permit simply because of objections to the products they sell? Finally, we have to ask, what public safety problem are you trying to solve by adding additional retailer ordinances? If there is a public safety problem, it would be appropriate to share the incident data documenting how in Scotts Valley or other communities, the problem directly related back to the legal operation of firearms retailers in the communities. Instead, if you are simply looking at what local ordinances other communities have in place and thinking, if they have them, then we should too, even if they can't back them up either, then you're really not solving a problem. Creating ordinances to feel better is something that's not responsible governing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Bob Hinchfatt, local resident for 20 years and an avid shooter, sportsman, and a member of the Scotts Valley Sportsman Club. I live near it, I shoot there almost daily. I am of friendship with the local shops, most of them, and I am very responsible and all the shooters I know are equally responsible. There are issues such as in Chicago and every large city and certainly Las Vegas that were very unfortunate. But I believe the current rules, the regulations with gun shops is appropriate and well-meaning. I have a great deal of faith in the PD to have the discussions with the owners and apply appropriate recommendations. And I know they will do that and I think that the council should support all of this. And again, I, you know, there's a lot of us in town who are avid shooters and again, need these kinds of, not only regulation, but these shops as well. I doubt that you'll ever see an overabundance of shops come into town. It's very competitive and of course, people can go everywhere in the state and purchase guns. I happen to be also a Montana resident and unfortunately, you can buy guns on the street at a car, at a, you know, at garage sale. That's Montana. But we will regulate, I'm sure, appropriately here as we do in most of California. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bob.
Hi, I'm Joey Hens, a resident of Scotts Valley. And a year ago, Scotts Valley actually was the gun shop capital of this county and I personally am thankful that it is not as much now today. And that's partially due to your ordinance and I thank you very, very strongly for that. Today's discussion, the timing is really quite extraordinary. And I'm not talking about Las Vegas. I'm talking about what happened this morning and all day today. This morning, a little bit after nine o'clock, I received a notification from KSBW on my phone and it was about a burglary at a gun shop in Watsonville. And then a few hours later, I received another notification. It said that there was a SWAT standoff that was continuing at the Watsonville gun store, still up on my phone right now. That standoff went all day long and Phil Gomez reported live on Facebook that the school, which was right nearby the gun shop, was on lockdown. And that standoff did not end until I was driving on my way over here. And then I received another notification saying the standoff is over, nobody died, and there were no arrests. But during that entire time, that school was either on lockdown or had to be evacuated and there were other buildings, businesses around that were also on lockdown. So the question I have for Scotts Valley is, does Scotts Valley want to take the chance of having that sort of thing happen here in Scotts Valley? Does our city council want to be responsible for that happening here? It very well could happen. The other thing to think about is, when we do talk about Las Vegas, there are a whole lot of discussions about what towns all those guns were purchased in. Does Scotts Valley really want to be in a discussion about where the guns were purchased that were used in the many mass shootings that will almost certainly happen in the future? So please keep that in mind and I urge the city council to go, be as strict as possible and use the highest standard as possible in making your decisions about having guns in this safe Scotts Valley community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
John Craig, it's a long time Scotts Valley resident. One reason we're safe is because we do have good guys with guns. I was going to go over the options one, two, and three very quickly. You know, the first one is add a couple of security items which are obviously missing in the state and federal, it's fine. Which then comes under the city manager's bailiwick. Option two brings everything into, again, new firearms, brings in the chief of police bailiwick. The option three pushes it into the planning commission. So it's not too unified. And two is very vague. Three talks about certain conditions, certain durations, and again, it's under the planning commissions. We already know, last time somebody looked, there's basically no place for another shop under current zoning. And zoning was preferred the last time this was addressed, two years ago. All right, that's, that's all been pushed off, it's sort of the, let's not have any more shops. To me, you know, it's been sad, Santa Cruz Army, others, there are resources. And I find, you know, if you're talking about safety, there are people who own guns. I have, you know, shot them through little kids. Some of us get them, they've been passed on from family members. Safe handling, training are keys to firearm safety. And we're all talking about a group of criminal acts here. I'm concerned about resources here for citizens who have enjoyed shooting. I recognize the value. So I would love to see another shop here of, you know, quality people who are providing training, who can provide information, who can deal with people's, even family heirloom with firearms, to say what their condition is, should you still have this, what can be done? Otherwise, you know, you're creating unsafe conditions in a home environment. Then very quickly, it's nice to sit there and say, you know, I wish things didn't happen. In my early twenties, I acquired a series of speeding tickets. These were done in a 1959 Volkswagen, so they were legendary speed events. Every time I got one of those tickets, again, we're talking 45 years ago, I was sitting in the front seat with the officer as he was writing out those tickets. Fast forward today, when our police are afraid to even approach a vehicle for fear of being gunned down, murdered, or executed, the times have changed. People have an interest in being able to defend themselves, the purchase level of guns is very high, and they should have the resources to get the training and safety requirements and better products. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
My name is Brandon shelf, I'm, own a business in the city of Scotts Valley, I live in Atcos. I'm a county paramedic and then I'm also, my business is medical and firearms instruction. I mentioned both just because I know a lot of people in this room and I'm sure everyone here has emotions. And events of late and anything that read all the news disturbs those emotions. And the whole thing about mentioning my other employment is, hey, I understand when things go wrong, what bullets do to bodies, what they do to families, I know all too well. I was working at one of the gun shops when we went through this thing, the first round, worked for Santa Cruz Army back then. We had four gun shops going on. I remember when we went into this, some of it was done without a lot of industry input. And industry input's an important thing when creating ordinances. Industry input helps you for making poor decisions that you may end up in a lawsuit for, it helps you saving money in just implementation, and sometimes you find out that, hey, this stuff's already an industry standard. One of the things about firearms retailing is that it's the most regulated industry, maybe next to hazardous material transport that we have in this country. As a paramedic, I walk into your house at 3:00 AM, I bring a lot of cool toys, I bring narcotics, I bring drugs that can do all kinds of things to you if I do it wrong. And I'm live scanned about when I get the job. To work in a gun shop, I get live scanned based every year, my background is constantly run, I have to have a certificate eligibility from the state. I'm one of those really watch people for being nothing but an American. I see those three options and I hear the and or that was thrown out and I totally understand where that comes from. One of the things I really implore you to do is try not to make any sort of hasty decision in this go-around, ask for input from the industry. I'm sure Robert Ford would be happy to spend some time with you guys going, hey, this is how the industry works. We already found out that when we went to pass that ordinance last time, every business had already met it, this is an industry standard. There's more laws coming down the book from the state, law after law after law after law. Mr. Reed, I believe it was you that said, you know, we don't need to worry so much about the overall numbers that we have because the market will sort that out. And the market did sort that out. The moratorium ruined one family business, but the market thinned out the rest. And so we don't need to worry so much about this. The zoning gets very difficult with option three just because of the NIMBYs. Every kind of special use thing, every person thinks they need to have an input, so, sorry, thanks. Thank you.
Hi, Ethan Taylor, I'm a resident of Scotts Valley and a parent of two girls, one attends middle school and will be next year. And I want to speak, you know, in favor of considering option one, you know, these firearm stores in California are already some of the most highly regulated, you know, in this state and in the country. You know, there's been enough laws there, stores and for gun owners to navigate. You know, I regret what the ordinance has done, you know, the loss of the business and I thought I considered that business, Santa Cruz Army, one of the safest places in town and was where, you know, if something were to happen, so I told my daughter to go there. I had friends I knew there and I knew it was a safe place. And it's a shame to see good businesses like that driven out of town by, you know, emergency ordinance that we have. Thank you.
Hi there, I'm Sarah Mosell and I've been in these parks since 1966 and I would like for you to think deeply before you make your decisions about many points of conscience and how you would feel if you didn't have the most comprehensive, thoughtful policy in place, at least as strict as the other areas around us, please, and maybe that the figure being tossed around of 600 feet, 400 feet, maybe there could be some, I'm as left as you get, but I want to find the middle of the road because this is, there are two sides and I don't want division to make nothing happen. So maybe there's a way with 350 feet, maybe there's a place in Scotts Valley that the children, that slower seniors, that unarmed people could be as safe as possible if something went wrong. But it wouldn't drive other aspects of the community to feel as if they've been kicked out. And again, I'm as left as they come, but I'm really trying to advocate for workability, but also, please be as strict as you can be and help keep this a nice place. And the irony I saw tonight was, how lovely that we start this evening talking about a park for our children, for people to feel safe and be outside, and that's one of the joys of Scotts Valley. And that my kids are safe here, you know? And there's also huge incidents of teen suicide and more guns that are around, I know that's the parent's responsibility, but the more guns available in the community, the more guns, more easily available in homes, yes, it's up to parents, but... But Healthy Kids Survey of California indicates that approximately 30% of ninth and 11th graders polled in our Scotts Valley schools had considered suicide at one point during that school year. So I really need to think of this in a very big way. You only get one chance with a gun and a bullet if you do it wrong, or you're not having a good day with it. Thank you.
Carrie Pykel, I've lived in Scotts Valley for almost 20 years, so a long time resident. I just have a couple of thoughts. My first thought is that I agree with many of the speakers here today that I think that you should be as strict as you possibly can within the law at regulating any existing or future gun shops in Scotts Valley. I think that people view Scotts Valley as a safe place to live, and I hope that that continues. I think it was alarming for some people several years ago when all of a sudden we have, we have four or five gun shops sort of, I thought, spring up unexpectedly in locations where I don't think they were appropriate, near the middle school, near preschools, basically just sort of, to me, sprung up overnight and took many of us by surprise. And that was not a safe or a comfortable feeling for me. I know that there are responsible gun owners out there, but it's something that you can ignore what's going on in society today. I don't think that having more guns or more gun shops make people safer. I think having fewer guns and fewer gun shops is a much better way to go, the professionals or the police and law enforcement handle problems that I guess would involve using a firearm against somebody. They're the ones that are trained to, at the maximum, to use guns in that manner. And just a couple of comments to things that other people have said. Some of the gun shop owners are complaining that their businesses are highly regulated and that they have the most regulations of almost any industry that exists. I don't have any problem with that at all. I 100% agree that they should be one of the highest regulated industries around because they sell guns. And one of the main purposes of having a gun is you shoot it and you could kill somebody with it. A child, a toddler can find one accidentally and shoot themselves or shoot their sibling or something with a gun. It's an industry that should be as regulated as much as it can be, in my opinion. I definitely support anything that you can do to regulate the gun shops within Scotts Valley. If you consider all three options, I think they should all be on the table, and anything else that's even stricter that you can come up with, I am 100% on board with that. Thank you for your consideration. And I, another comment stated that they thought this process was completely irresponsible. I disagree with that. I think you guys are going about this in a very responsible, orderly way, taking opinions from people in the public, taking advice from the police chief, and I appreciate it.
Deborah Baker, I've lived here for 19 years in Incorporated Mountain Area. And I wanted to talk about all these people talking about safety, that maybe they need to think about this the right way. When somebody goes into a gun store, they are not a felon, they are not an addict, they're not a mentally ill person, they know they're going to be background checked. The safest customers are going to find in any of your retail stores. I don't understand why anybody even cares where it's located in any retail area. I don't see how it could possibly be a bad influence to children. It's not drugs, it's not bad behavior, nobody goes in a store that's not law abiding. Your drug addicts, your mentally ill people are all at Safeway, they're at the library, they're not in the gun store. So I also am appalled when horrible things happen, and they're not happening in a place that only has people that can pass background checks in doing business. The incident from Watsonville this morning, I hadn't heard of yet, that sounds terrible, that is highly unusual. When we have a lockdown, it's a place like Whole Foods in Santa Cruz, where some crazy person is shooting people. It's not in the gun store. It's the first time I've ever heard of it. It's no likelier, I'd love to see data to be in a gun store than anywhere else here in the industry. So I hope, as horrible as this week has been for all of us, to see tragedies that we remember, this is about a business. People will not buy less guns if a business is not in Scotts Valley, they'll go over to help. We will have less employees here, we'll have less tax dollars here, we will not have less guns here.
Thank you, Ms. Baker. Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll bring this item back to the city council for deliberation.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I think not only for me, but the entire council, it's, you know, talking about these issues given what happened, this unspeakable tragedy in Las Vegas. I mean, it's, I know all of us are affected by that and the thought that something like that could happen here is just the worst nightmare in the extreme. And so in an environment where these emotions are raw, where people are just feeling the most basic things, like are my kids going to be safe, that have such a dispassionate, well-reasoned, thoughtful, respectful discussion, I think is not surprising to me, as that's how Scotts Valley does things. And I was just very proud of our community, all of you, how we engaged in this discussion tonight. The question that Laura and Ellen raised earlier about medical marijuana places and how we, we were talking tonight about allowing gun shops and but not allowing medical marijuana, how could that be, I guess, on the most basic level? That can be because there are Second Amendment protections, the way the courts are interpreting them, and have interpreted the Second Amendment from most of this country's history, that apply to firearms that don't apply to other things. They especially don't apply to marijuana, which is still considered illegal by the federal government. So there's, there is a different set of standards. We have different abilities to restrict marijuana in a way that we don't have to restrict guns. But I think the analogy actually is very apt, at least for me. I voted against, every time medical marijuana has come up before this council, I voted no. And one of the main reasons I voted no is I talked about, the first time this came up, our chief of police, John Weiss, sat right over where Chief Walpole is sitting right now, and he held in his hand a vanilla folder of crime that had been taking place at medical marijuana dispensaries in Santa Cruz County and elsewhere in the, in the community. The fact that the dispensaries themselves were a magnet for crime was something that weighed very heavily on a lot of law enforcement organizations that were against that. And even though recreational marijuana has been legalized by the state, there's still a number of law enforcement agencies who have very real concerns, including our agency, about what the presence of marijuana shops would do in terms of a law enforcement risk. And so that was an area in which we were allowed to, to exercise discretion, saying we didn't want to have that there. The same thing applies to me here. The Watsonville example is a fresh one about how there's more of a risk of crime, of somebody breaking in, I would think, at a gun shop than an ice cream store. I think we can, we can, we can all understand that. And while I have no doubt those are relatively rare occurrences, I know from, from some of the older Scotts Valley police that I've talked to, one of the first shootings that the officers of this department were involved with, with way back when, I don't know if it was 80s or 90s, with somebody who broke into, or what they didn't break into was in the middle of the day, they stole some guns and ammunition from a gun store here in Scotts Valley, and they headed down to Santa Cruz, there was a full speed chase, and everybody sworn from Santa Cruz. We had our K-9 officer involved in that, in that, in that case, and the suspect ended up being shot dead. So it's not impossible, in fact, we got an example of that today, that these can be a magnet for crime. So it seems to me a very legitimate and appropriate issue that we make sure that any gun shops that we do have, and again, we've heard from the city attorney when she reviewed this Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals case, we don't have the ability to keep them out. It behooves us, it seems to me, to make sure they're absolutely as safe as can be. And so I, I think the council did the right thing to require video cameras, I think we did the right thing to, to require burglar alarms. And I'm pleased and not surprised that the gun shop that we have locks up their firearms at night. And I guess I would like to see us continue with option number one, and I would like us to add a provision that requires that owners keep their, keep their products locked up. I don't know if it's at night, or I'll leave that to the discretion of our chief to work out the details when we adopt that. But I do think we should add that provision and continue option number one. You know, Nate raised a point when, when he was talking about the options that should be considered, that number one was one that he was comfortable with, and he had more questions about the other two. I guess the problem I have when I look at the other two, option number two just says that our, our chief of police can do inspections, or is authorized representative, and if, if there's something that's a mess, he has the ability to say, hey, I think there need to be some changes here. That seems to be pretty reasonable and low key to me. And I recognize there are a lot of people who have a different view of police and how trustworthy they are than I do. I recognize especially those, a lot of those folks are Second Amendment folks who feel like their constitutional rights are under siege. But at the same time, I guess, knowing our chief, knowing our department, knowing our history, I have a real hard time seeing how our police would be unreasonable or onerous or arbitrary in, if they thought there were additional security measures that would be required. So I do think our police need to be able to go in and, and make visits and, and make recommendations about additional security that should, that should take place there. As far as option three, conditional use permit, you know, I, I hear the argument that adds additional costs, but city staff, please correct me if I'm wrong, but as I understand it, we've, you know, we've got, we require a conditional use permit if you ever want to open a restaurant today, if you want to open a car wash, if you want to open a hotel, if you want to have a service shop. So if those are considered onerous restrictions that are breaking the back of small business, we're already doing that today to a huge number of our small businesses. And I guess I'll accept the fact that there's additional costs, there's a process that's involved that undoubtedly costs money and time. It also costs time for our city as well, which is not something that we have a lot of, given how strapped our, our own folks are. At the same time, again, I have a hard time seeing how requiring a conditional use permit is, is really an unreasonable burden that we're asking of, of a business, especially one, again, that I think is, is more of a crime risk than, than the average business. So I guess from my perspective, Mayor, I would urge us to adopt options one and two and three, and add to option number one a provision that requires gun shops to keep their, their products safely locked.
Thank you.
Well, I agree basically with Vice Mayor Reed, although I would like to see a couple other things. I would like to see us, assuming that we can do this in the city attorney in Cape, that she would take a look at this, I'd like to see us, my backup, there is a place for guns, for gun stores, it's part of our culture, it's part of our history, and I recognize there's a place for it. At the same time, I think it's appropriate to have some reasonable limits for this, for the sake of public safety and for our kids and our, our community. So I see it as a balance. But for me, part of that balance would be also to see if we could limit the number of firearms dealers in our city to one. That would be my, what I would like to see. And I would like to see us somehow zone in a way, even though we have the, would have the, potentially the conditional use permit process, I would also like to see that firearm dealers would be at least 500 feet from schools and daycare. But I recognize, I think we touched on this, I was on council, but a couple of years ago, the, there was a discussion about, well, what happens assuming you have a 500-foot limit? What happens then if a school or daycare moves into the 500 feet? What happens to the existing firearms dealer? Do they have to move? Is there a way to somehow prevent or limit the daycare or school from moving in? And we might be able to do that with our rules, but I also know, I believe, the state actually authorizes daycares in some cases, right? If they're small, if they're under, I think if they're under six, I'm not sure if we have a say in that locally. And so I know there are times where we can't, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, can't control a daycare moving into an area. So I'm not sure how to, how to wrestle with that, but, but I'd want a clear rule, because I don't want us to have to deal with that down the line. So if it works, I would like to see a 500-foot limit. If I recall right, the county ordinance basically, or their, their process anyway, restricts firearms dealers, I believe, to commercial areas or to, I'm not sure, commercial industrial, but clearly it's not residential. So I think they, I don't know that they've gone with limits per se, I think they're more in the direction of, of the zoning, and I know that's also what the conditional use permit would, would get to. So the 500-foot may or may not work, but I'd like us to see us explore that and add it in if that is legal and if that were the rule of council.
I'm comfortable particularly with one, and I feel that option two is good in that when we started this process a couple of years ago, we, we didn't involve industry, which was mentioned, but in this case, we did. I know our chief Walpole went to the one existing gun shop and went over these and got that input and understood from the owner that he could live with these requirements and gave some input. But during that last process is when we realized that each of our gun shops were already locking the firearms, even though we didn't have it in there. It was a good point to bring up to see that we did in the future. We had, we found that each one of them did lock their, in the safe, in addition to the alarms and the video cameras and obviously the background checks. And, but there are still times, I think, having our police chief be able to visit, look at that business, and be able to ensure that the appropriate safety steps are taken. And I know our department has a good reputation throughout the past 51 years of working with our business and, and not being just, as someone mentioned, just, just pulling regulations and just piling things on. So I'm comfortable with both of those options. I don't, I know in our prior ordinance, we had so many restrictions of saying it couldn't be near any restaurant that served alcohol, and it basically eliminated every part of the city. So it seemed if we, the, the one option on three, being able to, rather than restrict, it can't be near a restaurant that serves alcohol, it can't be near all these things, being able to look at it at an individual, case by case base, basis, and see if that location is appropriate, I'm more concerned with that, even either having that input, that we can look at it case by case and not make rules that are so strict that it's impossible for that business. At the current location right now, the current business is behind a restaurant that does serve alcohol, well, you cannot, no one can become intoxicated and go in and buy them. There's a 10-day waiting period. So whether there's a restaurant near that may serve alcohol was actually prohibitive totally and could have been brought us into court as what happened in Alameda County, because we couldn't justify that requirement, a restaurant being near a gun shop, as posing a legitimate risk. So personally, my, my real focus is particularly on one and two. I, I can understand a use permit for having that, that input for the location and to be able to have a way of reviewing where that is, rather than having to think of every option that we don't want them near, worrying about whether there's a restaurant or something. So my, my priorities are those. My understanding is the current gun shop was understood and comfortable with three as well. Those are my, my priorities are those two.
I was grateful when Sarah Mozal, I think is what her name is, and when she said, we need to find a solution, the middle of the road is comprehensive and thoughtful so that we can provide for businesses to exist and also the safety of our community. So I actually don't have a problem with combining options one, two, and three, and providing for the safety, but yet providing for our gun shop owners to have a shop in Scotts Valley if they meet the criteria and safety requirements. to have a shop in Scotts Valley if they meet the criteria and safety requirements. So the conditional use permit, I don't believe is too much to ask because we have restaurants and car washes, as Mr. Reed had indicated, and other entities that are required to go through the process. So I don't believe it's onerous, but it is a good process and provides balance and comprehensive thought. And I would feel that that options one, two, and three would be a good mechanism to address the issues that we have. Thanks.
Thank you for that. You know, it's funny, I was going to do the very same thing in terms of complimenting us, well, everybody who spoke today. You know, there's some deep-seated feelings on both sides of this issue. But in particular, I think, again, Sarah, I hope you don't mind me going without you here, but I thought it was, it was, it was a nice choice to say, listen, I'm a very left-leaning person, but I'm looking for areas of compromise and mutual effect that will allow both sides to come away with something that is beneficial for both sides. It's been kind of a hectic week. It's been kind of mind-numbing. And I think it was, you know, not just for people who are opposed to guns, but I think it was horrific for the people who own guns as well. It was just so shocking that you almost just want to turn away and say, really? And, you know, this is, I mean, every time, we've had pilots who have been depressed and driven or flown planes into the sides of mountains and killed 150 people. These are horrific things and actions that defy comprehension. And I know people view Scotts Valley and other places really, in their own neighborhoods, as they want these to be areas of safety. And I think to a large extent, this is a safe environment. This is a safe city. We have the lowest crime in the county. Are there any guarantees that it will remain that way with or without additional, I guess, restrictions on firearms or shops or whatever? No one really knows. Okay, that's kind of, that's kind of the place we live in. You know, Einstein talked about, how do you view the universe? Okay, do you view it as a hostile place or a friendly place? If we've, it's really hard not to view it as a hostile place right now. But I think overall, we benefit as a society of trying to continue that, you know, we're not universally hostile in this world, that we, you know, seek the best for ourselves, for our children and everything. I agree with kind of the compromise that I'm hearing from Vice Mayor Reed and others that say, you know, it's not a bad thing to have this reviewable, one, two, and three. I would agree with that. And a certain amount of trust has to happen with our police department and the people who regulate this. You know, I don't, I don't foresee our police chief or any other police officer going there to a shop and being extremely heavy-handed and adding onerous rules, regulation expenses just to drive out gun shops. I think, and in the same way, I think our city council and also our planning commission are thoughtful and will come to the types of decisions that benefit everybody in the community. So I'm willing to go ahead with what I'm hearing from the rest of the council with respect to implementing one, two, and three and hope that, you know, I know that we can't put the events of the last few days behind us because they're seared into our minds. I still, you know, 1966, I still remember the horrific summer of Richard Speck and Charles Whitman, the Tower in Austin, Texas. It sears into your mind and you can't really get rid of it. But by the same token, I'm hopeful that we can come to some sort of accommodation that meets the safety needs of our community. And I think this is a good first step in doing that.
Mayor, if, I don't know where the rest of the council thinks about my suggestion that item number one be modified to require that the firearms be locked. I don't know what respect.
Number two would take care of that, too, with the police chief.
That's if the police, that's correct. If the chief were to implement, choose to implement number two, he can. I would like to see us have that be part of option number one, if that pleases the council majority.
So is that a motion?
Yes.
Not seconded, yeah.
So are you giving a comprehensive motion?
So, yeah, I would move adoption of options one, two, and three, with option one being, with the chief having discretion to work out final wording to require that firearms be locked.
So just to clarify the process, so what we'll come back to with an ordinance, we will be amending the existing firearms dealer ordinance to include options one and two. And then we will also come forward with a zoning ordinance amendment, which would implement option three, which would be a conditional use permit. And it would go to, both of those would, sorry, the second option, the CUP, would go to planning commission. So they'll see them at different times.
And, you know, part of, part of the, I think, the consideration, just so people know, is that, you know, there are state and federal regulations and laws. Okay, the court case kind of demonstrates that. And I think, you know, our city attorney, our city manager are paying close attention to that so we don't get embroiled in overextending our authority to a point where we all of a sudden either get SmackDown sued or what have you. We're really looking for a middle ground here that benefits the whole community in terms of safety. And so I think that, you know, the speakers tonight spoke to that to a certain extent, and also the city council has addressed that as well.
I just wanted to give clarification from our city attorney with regards to the existing, as grandfathered in, correct? The existing gun shop business does not have to go through the conditional use permit. Is that correct?
Correct, at that location.
At that location.
However, if they wanted to expand or they moved, then they would need.
Okay, I just wanted to give that clarification. Thank you.
And our chief didn't meet with him, go with those and discuss it and got his input, too. One more thing, I just, just because we've, there's one area that has been a concern for me. It's a different concern, but we're talking about the safety of our kids, and that's opiate addiction. And trying to, I'm just, whenever I get a chance to get people to realize to secure, don't store, we have a real problem with our children being, becoming addicted because of the prescription pills that people don't realize are as dangerous. So it's one more area that is a real concern right now, a big concern.
Any tangential argument?
Thank you for that. So we have a motion. We have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I carry the unanimous. So again, I want to thank everybody for coming out, expressing their thoughts. And we'll move on to item number three. Future agenda. Anybody on the city council who's into?